Session of the 14 Sangguniang Pangunod is now called to order. Finally, take your seat for the roll call.
Honorable Cecilia B. Velus Diaz City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer present. Honorable Jesse R. Albius City Councilor present. Honorable Jose Lito S. Del Rosario City Councilor present. Honorable Gil G. Rosales City Councilor present. Honorable Melvin Ramon G. Benefa City Councilor present. Honorable Hilda Gail A. Abunal Gomez City Councilor present. Honorable Vidal P. Castillo City Councilor present. Honorable Jose C. Raniola City Councilor present. Honorable Jose B. Perez City Councilor present. Honorable Salvador M. Del Castillo City Councilor present. Honorable Antonio B. Beltrán City Councilor present. Honorable Maria Corazon M. Penyaflor Diganang Mangabalangay President and Executive Member absent. Honorable Mary Kyle Francine B. Tripulka Sangguneang Kabataan Federation President and Executive Member absent. The Honorable Penyaflor is around.
Is around.
Madam Chairman, there's a quorum.
Next item.
Prayer.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Dear Lord, as we deliberate in today's session, give us a wisdom for our compassion. Give us an understanding heart to the way with prejudice. Give us a foresight to know what the future may devise. Give us the courage and strength to seek the truth and what is good. Give us the facility of language that we may be understood. And finally, our Lord, make us worthy public servants of this city with deeply love and highly honor Naga City in the heart of Beol. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Pambansang Awit.
Good morning. Next item.
Privilege time.
Anybody would like to avail of the privilege time? Councilor Corazon Penyaflor, you are recognized.
Honorable Presiding Officer Vice Mayor Nini Nini Nidaasus, Tumay Kudus, Intep Sangguniang Pangunod, Our Industrious, Decisive Executive Mayor Menso Dikasyon, Our beloved Magenyus, Our Friends, Banutya, with his enchanting name, Godte. It's time before today to say the seat of support to the cause of the Diga ng mga barangay of Naga City. Bilang sa indang representante sa ginagalangan na konsyo na ini, maabot upo ipabot sa indong ang mga programa kan diga. As in hangadun ang sa indong tabang na ini supportahan. First in our agenda is the conduct of synchronized rabos every second and fourth Saturday of the month. This concept approved by the County City Mayor. Thank you po Mayor Menso Dikasyon and the fans for the purpose having been allowed with charge against the budget of the diga. Mapuunapo ang proyekto ini, synchronized rabos. Hangadpo ang programa na ini na mamantinir ang kalinigan sa siudad ng Naga sa paagin sa rabay na paglinig sa 20-siting barangay kang siudad. Sarusanahiling tang masisimbagan tulos na problema, tanging proyekto. Iyu ang padagos na paglangkaunin kaso ng bengi sa satoyapong komunidad. Kung maadiwala sangsuk sa tuyang lugar, mababawasan ta ang pagdakuling insektol namiyadara din hilang sa satoyang mga tao. Next in August, a project is the holding of massive campaign campaign for the citizens ng barangay to become a barangay kadama'y kang eskwela. As barkada, we'll take active participation at the Brigada Eskwela sa paagipon ini, mas magkikisumaru ang mga magenyu sa pagpauro ng edukasyon sa satoyang siudad as in pagkaraikan lugar. Adaan kan mga kaakian. May tutulod po ang participasyon kang generasyon kang papano na tatrabangan ang mga member kang komunidad pasiring sa sarong kuyuhan. My dear colleagues, I seek your assistance in this endeavor at 27 punong barangays of Naga. Look forward for seeing you in the conduct of these projects. Your presence in our synchronized rabos in our Brigada Eskwela is every most convenient to your schedule will be great boost to our morale as barangay public servants. Tabangan po nindok kami na mas pangpadanayon ang bayanihan sa satoyapong magbang lugar. Diyos mabalas po.
Thank you, Honorable Penyaflor. Any other who'd like to avail of the privilege time? None. Honorable Del Rosario, uli ko kaya nagpaan.
Amarin agapo sa kabos. My esteemed colleagues in this august chamber, our friends, members of the media. Good morning. Today, August 9, former President Ramos will be finally to rest at the libingan ng mga bayani. Military officer who rose to ranks from second lieutenant, Commander-in-Chief, FBR served during the Marcos regime as head of the Command for Administration of Detainees, which oversaw the arrest and detention of the regime's political prisoners. Because of this, the responsibility for some military abuses were attributed to him. However, during the 1986 People Power Revolution, FBR broke away from the Marcos administration and pledged allegiance to the new government established by then-President Corazon Aquino, for which he was celebrated as a hero by the Filipino nation. Madam Chair, every last Monday of the month of August, we observe the National Heroes' Day pursuant to Republic Act 9492. During this time, we honor and pay tribute to our known and unknown heroes as this occasion commemorates the city of Pugadlawin, a revolt that kicked off the 1896 Philippine Revolution against the Spanish colonizers and marked an end to the long struggle of our country toward independence. It is also during this month that we commemorate the demise of a number of our notable leaders who are also worthy to be hailed as heroes as we reflect on their undertakings and believe their accomplishments in the name of service. One of whom was a former senator of our country and governor of the province of Terlak, Benigno Ninoy Aquino Jr., was tons critic of the Marcos regime. His untimely death on August 21, 1983 rekindled the opposition against the dictatorship rule and ignited widespread protest, which eventually brought his widow Corazon Aquino to the political front in 1986, becoming the country's president after Marcos. Cory passed away in the month of August on its first day in the year 2009. The couple's son, Benigno S. Aquino III, was then elected president in 2010. As for President Ramos, as the president who assumed next to Aquino, his works as a politician were stellar, according him the accolade as the dedicated statesman. His tenure was one marked with crisis. His reforms, also known as Philippines 2000, centered on five-point program: fitnessability, economic growth and sustainable development, energy and power generation, environmental protection, and streamlined bureaucracy. It was during his time that our country became a newly industrialized country and was recognized as among the tiger cub economy in Asia together with Indonesia, Malaysia, Thailand, and Vietnam. Coincidentally, Madam Chair, for us here in Naga, the month of August is also the month wherein we commemorate the debt anniversary and pay tribute to the life and works of some of our very own former local and national leaders. Last August 5, we commemorated the 17th debt anniversary of our former senator and then secretary of the Department of Education under the Arroyo administration, the late Raúl S. Roco, who hailed from Naga City. Roco crafted laws that strengthened the banking industry, which served him the honor as the father of Banco Central, as well as bills that worked for the protection of the women sector for which he was named as an honorary woman. He also championed the education sector with his support for both students and teachers with his "Study Now, Pay Later" and the Magna Carta for public school teachers. Nine days from now, on August 18, we will be commemorating the 10th day debt anniversary of our former city mayor and DILG secretary, Bessie M. Robredo, whose legacy revived people participation and empowerment in our city leadership and introduced good governance and transparency initiatives in our system, championing for his part a generous kind of leadership and the brand of Matino at Mahusay that sets the standard for a leader. This month of August, Madam Chair, we salute them all, known and unknown alike, to celebrate their courage, transformative leadership, and selfless and excellent service for standing their ground and refusing to bow to abuses. They have had ignited many reforms and led our country on through colonial freedom, economic victories, and many other triumphs. Happy National Heroes' Month.
Thank you, Honorable Del Rosario. Anybody else would like to avail of the privilege time? None. Okay, next item.
Reading and approval of the minutes of the previous sessions.
Honorable...
Sorry, my apologies. Reading and approval of the order business.
Honorable Salvador Del Castillo.
Ah, Madam Chair. I move to dispense with the reading of the order of business and move to include the following. Under unfinished business, at the request of the city mayor for the ratification of the deed of donation.
Item number six.
Yes, and there is due on Madam Chair. The deed of donation executed by and between the City Government of Naga and Mrs. Winnie Uliban Billegas, overing 157 square meter of property located at Balatas. Under unfinished business, Madam Chair, the committee report of the Committee on Fiscal Order and Public Safety together with its attached proposed resolution and proposed ordinance. See, under unfinished business, the committee report of the Committee on People Empowerment. Still under unfinished business, the report of the committee and appropriation together with the letter coming from the City Budget Officer. And last, under... Still under unfinished business, Madam Chair, the report of the Committee on Barangay Affairs and Barangay Dispute. And last, under unfinished business, the letter coming from the City Budget Officer addressed to the Honorable Jesse R. Albius, the Chair of the Committee on Appropriation regarding a certification to the other committee. And unfinished business, Madam Chair, the request from the Office of the Mayor for authority regarding regarding the Moa by and between the City Government of Naga and the Central vehicle state university of agriculture. Unless this matter was already taken up, but I don't remember any authority granted to the mayor regarding this. So I placed this under unfinished... under new business, but with the understanding that if this is... this is already covered by a previous authority, we will transfer this under unfinished business. So with that, Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the order of business.
Any second, the agenda with the parliament inclusion is now approved. Next item.
Order of Business: Reading and Approval of the Minutes of the Previous Sessions. Item number one, Minutes of the 138th Regular Session of the 14 Sangguniang Pangunod held on May 17, 2022.
Ah, Madam Chair.
Honorable...
I move to dispense with reading of the Minutes of the 138th and 139th Regular Session of the 14 Sangguniang Pangunod and move for its approval.
Any second, approved. Next item.
Minutes of the 5th Regular Session of the 14 Sangguniang Pangunod held on August 2, 2022.
Ah, Madam Chair, I move for the... To dispense with the reading of the Minutes of the last Regular Session and move for its approval.
Any second, approved. Next item.
Special Business Order. Item number one, First Endorsement dated August 1, 2020 of the Sanador de City Mayor endorsing the deed of donation between the City Government of Naga and Bureau of Fire Protection, Region 5, relative to the donation of one unit fire truck and sets fire hose and one unit chainsaw subject for ratification of the Sangguniang Pangunod.
Honorable Benefa. Motion to approve. Ratification.
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of this motion of this...
Deed of Donation.
Deed of Donation, the... This endorsement of the honorable members of the Sangguniang...
Deed of Donation from the Bureau of Fire Protection.
The donation between... the deed of donation between the City Government of Naga and the Bureau of Fire Protection, Region 5, relative to the donation of one unit fire truck, and sets fire hose, and 11 units...
One what?
Oh, one unit. One unit, correction, Madam Chair. One unit chainsaw subject to the ratification...
For ratification, ah, for ratification.
So, I move for the ratification of this... Deed of Donation, Madam Chair.
Since this is the first, this will be a confirmation and ratification at the same time. Okay, approved.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Next item.
Letter dated August 8, 2022 of the Sanador de City Mayor requesting for the ratification of the deed of donation dated August 8, 2022, executed by Winnie Uliban Billegas and Edgar Billegas in favor of the City Government of Naga.
Honorable Del Castillo.
Honorable, the donation is delivered only by Winnie Uliban Billegas in connection with our proposed command center located at Balatas. So there is no condition, this is an unconditional donation, Madam Chair. So with that, I move for the confirmation and the ratification of the deed of donation entered into between the City Government of Naga and Mrs. Winnie Uliban Billegas, overing 157 square meter property located at Balatas, Naga City.
Any second. Any second, okay, approved. Next item.
Unfinished Business. Item number one, Committee Report of the Committee on Culture and the Arts dated August 1, 2022.
Committee on Culture and the Arts, Councilor Jose Perez, Chairman.
Madam Chair, may I request acknowledgement of the following report of the Committee on Culture and the Arts. The meeting was held last August 1, 2022. I mean, the committee hearing was held last August 1, 2022, and there was a quorum. There were two items up for deliberation during that committee hearing. The first is the proposed resolution authored by Honorable Salvador M. Del Castillo entitled "Resolution Requesting the National Historical Commission of the Philippines to Correct the Inscription of the Monument of the Fifteen Vehicle Markers Located at Plaza Quince MacRes, City of Naga Based on Historical Records." We had a very enlightening, intelligent, and passionate discussion of the proposed resolution. And we were fortunate that in attendance were two distinguished professors, Mr. Professor Dito Valiente of the Tenetanaga Vehicle Cultural Studies and writer Christian Cordero. We also have other guests from the other offices, and everyone was active participant to the passionate debate prompted by this resolution by the Honorable Councilor Salvador Del Castillo. May I now proceed to the disposition of this item? On motion of Honorable Jose Raniola, seconded by Honorable Melvin Ramon Benefa and Honorable Mary Kyle Francine Tripulka, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangguniang Pangunod to defer action on the matter pending further study. The committee further resolved to set another hearing on the matter and invite Mr. Danny Hirona, historian and representatives of the Arts, Culture and Tourism Office or ACTO, City Parks and Recreational Facilities Management Office, and the Department of Education to the said second committee hearing. So move, Madam Chair.
The matter is deferred for further study.
The second resolution is resolution... the second resolution taken up is resolution number 2022-17 of Barangay Kararayan, Naga City, entitled "Resolution Naming Certain Streets in Zones 1, 2, 3, and 4 of Barangay Kararayan, Naga City That Have Remained Unnamed Up to This Time In accordance with the rules and guidelines Set forth by the National Historical Institute of the Philippines." May I go directly to the disposition, Madam Chair? On motion of Honorable Jose C. Raniola, seconded by Honorable Melvin Ramon Benefa, the committee resolved to defer consideration of the matter in the absence of the proponent. That's the end of my report, Madam Chair.
The matter was deferred. Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Perez. Next item.
Motion for consideration... reconsideration submitted by Tanguedot siblings appealing for compassion to reacquire their property which was optioned for non-payment of tax.
Honorable Del Castillo.
Totally discussed during the committee hearing of the Committee on, I think, City Parks. Wherein, we invited the City Clerk there and based on... ...making a... ...distress because it might be a vehicle case. The... ...time period... Uh, the, uh, um, the period, uh, had already elapsed based on that the people are ruling themselves. Uh, the party of the city, and if not, uh, not, uh, not, uh, if, 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 subject to, uh, the, uh, thing. Based on the current, uh, faith of the, uh, of the, of the, of the, so, if we should, uh, advise the, uh... Uh, the question of our decision, so that, uh, this matter will be thought of as...
Thank you, Honorable Del Castillo. The secretary will advise to write the, the letter sender. Honorable Del Rosario.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I, uh, read one, two, three, four. Um, probably, Madam Chair, uh, we can, uh, we can, uh, make, uh, a second look to this request, uh, later on, because in the fourth paragraph, Madam Chair, uh, states there that there is no private individual who bided for the property. The city is now the only winner. So may or man, ibang nagbid, nasa possession mangirakan city. So hiligot ako, Madam Chair, siguro, baka on some other mode, some other mode, baka, uh, hiligot ako, paano tapo ma, ano ni? I stand with my chair, uh, on his manifesta, Madam Chair, that, uh, he already lost his, uh, opportunity to, to redeem the property because of the provisions of the... However, since, uh, there was no other bidder, and, uh, is, uh, now with the city government, baka hiligot. So siguro, Madam Chair, I, I move that, um, um, we, uh, we return this to the city legal officer and, uh, recommend to ask kung ano ang pwedeng, uh, mode na pwedeng...
There was already a suggestion from the Honorable Del Castillo that they might, it will be, uh, for a public auction of the property and that they can apply, right, Honorable Del Castillo?
Yes, that's true, for this, wherein, uh, we base our decision. And according to that decision of the Supreme Court, uh, the redemption period had already been prescribed, as one year after the date of the auction date. So there is no more either things that should be done by the city but to, uh, possess the property. And, um, as I mentioned earlier, uh, the Targilid, uh, siblings can still participate if ever. This property will be, uh, auctioned by the city. Uh, there are several properties acquired by the city for want to be there, and, uh, that can be auctioned by the city. Uh, provided that, uh, the fair market value of all those properties subject to the auction by the city are already determined by the City Appraisal Committee, and that will already be the basis for the, uh, floor price of whatever property that will be subject to auctioning. Definitely, they can participate, but it will already be based on the fair market value of the property, not based on the unpaid real property taxes in other person. So there is, I, my statement, Madam Chair, is based on a Supreme Court decision, so we cannot do otherwise.
So you're not agreeable to the suggestion of the Honorable Del Rosario that to refer this to the city legal officer for legal...
Because the city legal officer has already submitted to us a copy of the decision of the Supreme Court. Their opinion was based on the Supreme Court decision.
It was already forwarded to the city legal officer for their opinion? Was this already...
We, we request the city legal officer, Madam Chair, for an opinion on the matter. And the city legal officer, uh, submitted to us their legal opinion citing the Supreme Court ruling on the matter.
Thank you, Honorable Del Castillo. Does that answer your very...
Yes, Madam Chair, in, in fact, I already, I also read the Supreme Court decision. It was clear. But, Madam Chair, taking note of the fourth paragraph of the letter, no private individual who bided. So may or man, may or man nagparticipate. So nasa city mangiraray. So ang, baka ikong, Madam Chair, ng ibang, uh, paagi, na, because the, Madam Chair, the last paragraph states that we do not want to be homeless with this critical medical situation of our father. So just imagine the impact of this, kung, uh, ano ni. So siguro, Madam Chair, baka ikong ibang paagi. I, I, I stand by my chair sa committee. I also read the Supreme Court decision. But in this time, Madam Chair, siguro, we can, we can look for other ways na ano. Baka, baka pwede pa. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Del Rosario. So the secretary is instructed to write the Targilid, ay, na to? Targilid, uh, family citing the reasons, uh, simply, and, uh, the reasons made by the Honorable Del Castillo and perhaps also advise them if they can look for other resources, that, that they will be beneficial to the family. Okay? Next item.
Letter dated August one, twenty twenty-two of the city legal officer, providing an update on the status of the negotiation between city government and owner of the property at Hinawasan Street, San Francisco de City.
Pending with the Committee on Housing. So this is pending with the Committee on Housing. Next item.
Letter dated August eight, twenty twenty-two of Mr. Dada de la Rosa submitting an inventory of the CSOs in the City of Naga.
We recognize the presence of Mr. Dada de la Rosa at the podium. So was this requested by any members of the Sanggunean? So we take, okay, Honorable Rosales.
Uh, Madam Chair, this is the response of the CSO desk officer in the resolution that the Sanggunean had passed, uh, requesting the said office to lead the compliance of the city government with the ILG Memorandum Circular Twenty Twenty-two dash zero eighty-three. We thank the CSO desk officer in the person of Mr. Dada de la Rosa for responding promptly to our request. And as mentioned in the letter, after the said inventory, the posting will be undertaken and the eventual call for accreditation of the CSOs listed in the directory that the, uh, CSO desk officer has already produced to us this morning. So, uh, unless there is, uh, uh, something else that our CSO wants to say, uh, I think we can already, uh, take note of this, uh, letter or communication by the CSO desk officer.
So they have been in coordination with NCPC? Okay, because that was one of the problems, na si mga members kang NCPC is not accredited to the city. Yeah, I think that was one of the issues raised during the NCPC meeting. So we take note of this. Next item. Thank you, Mr. de la Rosa.
Proposed Ordinance authored by Honorable Jose Lita C. Del Rosario, further strengthening disaster resiliency by providing legislative framework on establishment of underground cabling in Naga City.
Honorable Del Rosario.
Uh, good morning again, Madam Chair. This is being submitted on second reading. Uh, Part Konikang Thirteen Sanggunean Panlansod, Madam Chair, uh, unfinished business of the Thirteen Sanggunean.
And then you reparties.
But, uh, during the, uh, uh, reconstitution of, uh, the Fourteenth Sanggunean Panlansod Committees, we have two new members, uh, namely Councilors, uh, Omar Buenafe and Councilor, uh, uh, Attorney Salvador Del Castillo. The original members, Madam Chair, of the Committee on Public Utilities are Councilor Albius, Councilor Perez, and yours truly as the chairman. So during our first meeting, Madam Chair, of the Committee of the Fourteenth Sanggunean, uh, Committee on, uh, Public Utilities, there was a request from, uh, Councilor, uh, Del Castillo that we call another round of meeting, uh, to the different telcos, uh, to address, uh, some of the concerns, uh, ano ni. So we had that committee hearing, Madam Chair, participated in by the different, uh, telcos, and, uh, suggestions were made and also already incorporated in the proposed draft, uh, as being presented, uh, this morning, Madam Chair. Let me run through, uh, some of the provisions of the proposed ordinance. This will, in short, Madam Chair, this will be called as the Underground Cabling Ordinance of Naga City, under Section One. In Section Two, the definition of terms, the scope, Section P. It shall be the priority program of the City Government of Naga to undertake efforts to construct and institute underground cabling for all power and telecommunications network operating in the city. In pursuit of this, it is about policy of the local government to comprehensively consult all the stakeholders so as to come up with a suitable approach to lessen the impact of this program to the capital outlays of the concerned utility companies, which includes the facing of its implementation. So in Section Four, Madam Chair, this presentation, uh, enumerated the purpose of the ordinance. In Section Five, Madam Chair, the discussion on the prohibited acts. I, uh, mentioned there one, two, three, four, five, six, six, six items constituting prohibited acts. In Section Five A, Madam Chair, the proposed ordinance discusses exemptions. In case of typhoons, earthquakes, or any force majeure, the above mentioned acts may be allowed by the city mayor in order to expedite the recovery and restoration effort of cable, power, and other public utility companies. In Section Five B, Uniform Application, all building house owners shall provide service entrance, entrances compatible for underground electrical and telecommunications wires and cables. In, uh, Article Three, Madam Chair, in the miscellaneous provisions, uh, the ordinance states that we will be respecting the, what we call the joint poll agreement entered into by Casareco two with, uh, the different telcos. In Section Seven, yupunis si Madugung Big Urulayonme sa committee level, the cost will bear the cost. The cost for placing underground, the electrical and telecommunications wires and cables, including the restoration of the excavated street sidewalks, shall be jointly shared among the electric companies, public telecommunications carriers, and other concerned, concerned public utility firms as determined and stated in a unified underground conduit plan. I'll discuss later, Madam Chair, what is, uh, the underground conduit plan. In the meantime, that the telcos are preparing for the transition to underground cabling, the city government may initiate construction in whole or in part drop subject to the payment of as true fees as determined by the, uh, the task force. In Section Eight, Madam Chair, we discuss there the private sector participation. The city government may up the assistance of the private sector and enter into partnership through any appropriate agreement in order to pursue and realize the provisions of this ordinance and achieve the purposes set thereby. In the next, uh, section, Madam Chair, the priority areas, one is the Balatas, uh, team, pagi baba. New development center, diversion area, Almeda Highway, and the city mayor may determine other priority areas. New subdivisions and city housing projects, among others, must be highly considered for this purpose. Medyo magaragastu ni Madam Chair sa partang mga telcos, so we're thinking of, uh, uh, putting a provision on tax incentives. Considering the cost that may be incurred by telcos in compliance with this ordinance, the city government shall endeavor to assist the concerned telcos and/or utility companies through provision of tax incentives appropriate thereto. In Section Eleven, Madam Chair, these are the various implementing offices or agencies of the city government. CEO, city building official, city administrator, there are services, and as well as the, uh, on the part of the Metro Naga Water District, it shall be furnished with copies of the approved plan of the telecommunications utility companies in order to evaluate those which may affect existing and proposed water lines. During implementation, we made sure nakabaliponing provision any, because this was requested by the MNWD as contained in their letter addressed to the committee. During implementation, all the, uh, utility companies concerned shall coordinate first with the MNWD and request for supervision during excavation activities. We are also putting in there, Madam Chair, what we call one-stop shop, uh, created under the expanded powers and function of the task force. So yupunin Madam Chair, sa next section, ang interagency task force with, uh, the primary purpose, the function ni Madam Chair. Uh, Letter A, to conduct strategic planning and recommend plans of action pertaining to underground cabling. Letter B, to develop a unified and comprehensive underground conduit plan. This was suggested by PLDT, Madam Chair. In the letter contained, uh, PLDT National Office in Pasig, uh, in our, uh, request, based on our request, uh, for them to comment on this, uh, proposed ordinance. So they specifically mentioned about this underground conduit plan. So other functions of the, uh, uh, committee or the task force are, uh, set, uh, thereby. The next, uh, section, Madam Chair, the next section. The Implementing Rules and Regulations. Within six months, this August chamber will approve of this ordinance. Within six months, the interagency task force, as constituted with the, uh, participation of the cable and telecommunications companies, shall formulate IRR, which shall henceforth form part of this ordinance. The drafting of a unified and comprehensive underground conduit plan shall be the most priority of the task force. In Section Fourteen, Madam Chair, discusses the penalties. Uh, please observe yung, uh, twenty days calendar, uh, uh, yung time gap of the, uh, issuance of the, uh, notice of, uh, violation. Next section, uh, team, pagi baba. Yung, uh, sa citation ticket, ini, Madam Chair, si ordinary nahiling ta sa mga citation ticket. Uh, because of the nature of this, uh, uh, matter, Madam Chair, the CLO, the city legal, is tasked to finalize the necessary citation ticket for this, uh, purpose. So we, we, we have constituted, or the proposed ordinance is constituting a joint legislative and executive oversight, uh, uh, committee. So in, uh, Section Seventeen discusses the transitory provision and the other, uh, provisions of this one. So with this, Madam Chair, um... Sa totoo lang, Madam Chair, medyo mapagal, ma... Magasto, inning, uh, programang ini. But because Naga City and Bicol, Madam Chair, we are, uh, we are being, um, threatened by nineteen or twenty typhoons a year. With, uh, five or four or three of these nineteen or twenty typhoons, uh, uh, are considered as, uh, uh, very threatening and dangerous. We have to think of, uh, matters or strategies to address disaster resiliency. So with this underground cabling ordinance, we are putting in, Madam Chair, a legislative framework so that we can achieve this, uh, purpose. So this presentation, Madam Chair, is now open for further discussion, comments, suggestions from other members, critique from other members.
Was a public hearing conducted when this was?
Uh, no, Madam Chair, uh, it does not call for a public hearing.
But there was, there's a provision na may mga, may mga properties na maagihan and that needs their approval. I think ibang section, and, uh, nakakaab.
The, the task force, Madam Chair, as constituted, may call for, uh, public hearing on this, uh, purpose. We're, uh, just, uh, setting the legislative framework for this, uh, Madam Chair. So we are giving the task force, uh, the powers na kaipuanya to realize the objectives of this, uh, ordinance, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Del Rosario, acknowledging the presence of the Honorable Mary Francine Tripulca and also uh, Barangay Kagawa and Bobby Orofo from Kalawak. Any, the table is now open for comments on the proposed ordinance. Honorable Perez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am a member of the committee, but I would like to verify if, uh, there has been, uh, formal recommendations or suggestions submitted by the telcos on this, uh, proposed, uh... by the telcos on this proposed cabling, on this proposed underground cabling.
Thank you, Madam Chair. During the thirteenth sanggunean, Madam Chair, uh, in our various meetings, uh, we asked the position papers of the various telcos. The PLDT National Office submitted its comments, particularly yung big, unders, uh, undersporko na unified underground cabling plan. Uh, even yung Kasurako II. Kasurako II, Madam Chair, also submitted its position paper. Um, Metro Naga Water District also submitted its position paper. So yupuni si mga nag-submit out of our request for them to submit their position papers. But during the committee hearing, Madam Chair, our previous committee hearings, uh, the different telcos were around and were invited and were around.
Honorable Perez?
Malok question. Has there been hostile, uh, hostile feedback or, um, what's this, uh, opinions from this telcos on such proposal?
Yes, Counselor Perez, sir, indeed, there was some hostileang uh, opinion, uh, mainly on because yung gasto will bear the cost. Kaya po, Madam Chair, ibaliko naman tabitin, inuman sa cost, discussion sa cost. Sa cost. Yan, section seven, ang gasto po kaniya, Madam Chair, will be borne by the different telcos. Ano, of course, itong mga residents, mga buildings will just, uh, provide for the service entrance. So ang cost kaniya will be borne by the different telcos, uh, telecommunications, including yung Kasurako II and the other affected, ano. So Madam Chair, biga, sa payantapo ni, niing tin, pagbaba duman sa provision on detaxes, tax incentives, section ten. So yung cost na pwedeng i-incord ninda, will be, uh, restricted by the city government by extending them, whatever, in whatever form, uh, na-maisip ang executive department subject to approval of the Sanggunean Panlongso. In the case of Kasurako, Madam Chair, ako dati po akong board director ng Kasurako, naging board president ako ng Kasurako. Pag nagkagagun, bagyo, Madam Chair, minsan nag-uutang kami ang Kasurako sa Anaya, mga seventy million, thirty-five million, sa sarong ano lang yan, sa sarong ano. And binabawi iyan kang Kasurako by means of reinvestment fund. So binabawi manggiraray yan sa consumers. So minsan naguutang kami kato, modern mga one hundred million because very extensive si damit na create bako lang hindi sa Naga, kundi sa iba pang areas kang Kasurako II. So in Naga City, while initiating this, ang arig na medyo settle kita pag-abot kang panahon. Kung paulit-ulit na lang siya, na nagagastuning fifty million, thirty-five million, twenty million, kada bagyo, ano. Imagine do ang cost kayaan, so why not put it underground? Why not put, uh, it underground, is siguro na maraysa, at the one-time investment? Again, a question, iri-recover niya ni sa tao, yes, iri-recover niya sa tao. Pero mas maray niyang i-recover saruan beses, isa uro utro pagbabagyo, binubuktak ini duma sa biga apod tang reinvestment fund. Ginilinin duma, Madam Chair, ang power bill sa Kasurako, there is that portion there, what they call as reinvestment fund. Yung na po ni si mga, uh, na-i-incor, na-out duman sa mga usual na, sa budgeting ka. Uh, kaya, so yupuni, ang normally, to answer Counselor Joe, your, uh, your question, yun is medyo sticky area. Pero itong ibang, ibang aspect, Madam Chair, itong pag-priority kang balatas, new site development, uro yun si da duman ka boss. As a matter, pag Madam Chair, the city mayor already called for a meeting sa mga telcos and the MNWD and the Kasurako II, ano. Ah, kung igwa, Madam Chair, kaya bigbuktak ta, Madam Chair, sa ano, tin pakie, ano duman sa partnership with the private sector? Pakita astin, lalabas na, lalabas na. Yan, section eight, kung igwa, Madam Chair, na investor, na gustong maga-initiate ng underground cabling and siya na lang ang babayadan kan mga telcos pwede, kasi binuktak na dyan, we are partnering with the private sector. May up the assistance of the private sector and enter into partnership through any appropriate agreement. Uh, igusin na biga apod na pass-through. So kung halimbawa siya nagbuktak ang underground na konstrakan si, si underground tunnel, si mga telcos maagis ayam, mabayad sa iya. So day na mahiru kayaan ang city government. However, sa implementation kang, kang planong ini, Madam Chair, kung mayo pang naghihingua, the city government may initiate. So eventually, this will call for amendment duman sa annual investment fund in the, in the future kung sakaling aproban day ini, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable, Honorable Castillo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Abot ko ng po duman sa, sa tuwyan proponent, kung igwa ng siyudadig di sa Bicol region, na igwa na ni underground cable cabling.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Vidal Castillo, sir. As far as Bicol, mayo pa po akong aram. Sa Mindanao, igwa na pong saro, sa Davao City. Sa Davao City po, big paradalang ko si ordinance sa ninda, specific lang ito mga kalye duma sa may atubangan kang City Hall. Yupo to si, si first round kang underground cabling ninda. Itulang mga kable duma sa tapat kang City Hall and itong neighboring, ano ni. Sa Manila, Madam Chair, duma sa BGC, nagigun 'yung problema kasi nagkanya-kanyang underground cabling. So kanya-kanya, because may yun 'yung local government intervention. May yung framework na biga gibo ang local government. Unlike duma sa may Mowa, sa may Mall of Asia area, magayunon siya kasi big tabangan siya kang local government. This was manifested by Engineer Moreno during one of our committee hearings, Madam Chair.
Okay, any other questions, Honorable Penaflor?
Uh, maumapunin ngang sayang pong ginibangwala sa ko po yun po dyan. Mga katapang pwede diba sa, sa tuwyan pong side book operations? Uh, makakatabang po sa side book operations, ah, masipo sa ngayon na pisipin ini. Ang sa tuwyan pong problema po, continuing problems po na ang mga wire po sa nagbuhulog sa mga postipo, nakakamarautop pong paghilingon, kaya kung hindi po nasira raw na po ang daga, dakla po ining, uh, maray na gibo.
Thank you, Honorable Penaflor, any other comments?
Thank you, Counselor Vidal Castillo.
Honorable Del Castillo?
Hearing, uh, eastern, eastern, uh, requested that they be given time. In the, the committee give them, I think, seven days on which to submit their comment. So my query, Madam Chair, is, uh, nakasubmit na ba 'yung eastern cable? And, uh, kunakasubmit na na-incorporate na yung di sa proposed, uh, ordinance?
Honorable Del Rosario?
Thank you, Counselor Attorney Del Castillo, sir. Indeed, we gave Eastern Telecommunications seven days to submit. We furnished them, the secretary furnished them a copy of the proposed draft. However, the seven days already elapsed, elapsed, Madam Chair, and we have yet to receive, uh, a comment. However, in the disposition of the Committee on Public Utilities, we'll be proceeding with the discussion, uh, uh, of this proposed ordinance, uh, um, after the lapse of the seven days. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Del Rosario, Honorable Rosales?
I support this ordinance, Madam Chair. So, section five, can we show section five, uh, tin? Igwang provision in letter E, failure to remove idle poles, wires, and cables and other overhead lines, accessories within two months from issuance of notice to remove the same. Ikahanap ko po, Madam Chair, kung igwang provision in the ordinance na identified na yu ang maissue pang notice to remove those idle poles, wires, and cables. Uh, kung mayo, Madam Chair, na naka-identify kung isay na office ang maissue po kayaan, perhaps we could add that as a function of the task force on recommendation of, sigurang expert office dyan is the city engineers' office, shall identify kung are na mga dapat haralion. And the task force, uh, my suggestion should issue the notice to remove within two months as provided in letter E, section five of that ordinance.
Thank you, Honorable Rosado, Honorable Proponent?
Thank you, Attorney Rosales, sir. Um, it's the mindset of the proponent, Madam Chair, that it will be the committed function of the task force. However, for purposes of clarity, this is a presentation that accedes to the request of, uh, Attorney Rosales, that I'll incorporate that in the function of the task force. Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Attorney Rosales.
Thank you, Honorable Del Rosario, any other comments? None? Okay, Honorable Perez?
Igwa naman niyung, ano, underground cabling, pero it's not, it's not the kind na bigo urulayan ta idi. Dahil ang underground cabling na existing, for example, sa Legaspi, limited man lang sa electrical lights. Ano, bako yan itong comprehensive na yaon na si tele, yaon si, yaon si communication, yaon si power lines. Yan ang bigaan ni di sa, uh, ordinance ang ini. And I would like to take note na, mistkito progressive cities like Makati, ang underground cabling ninda, limited man lang sa commercial areas. The rest of Makati, over, over, kaya Manggirari, overhead Manggirari ang electrical lines. Gustong sabihon, it was basically a private initiative. Itong Makati Commercial Center, sa kaitong, uh, ibang parts sa Quezon City, and also in, uh, in Fort Munifacio. Kaya, this is a very, ano, dapat ikomentay niyong initiative na ini, because the city of Naga is taking this initiative with so much, um, LGO intervention. Big pipiritas si mga, si mga cable companies na magsusug kaining local ordinance na ini, without waiting for the, uh, private initiative. Kaya, dapat suportaran ta ini, dapat man ma-kumminsita si mga telcos. And i-assure man si consumers na may yung abrupt adjustment sa mga rates brought about by this technology. Ngayon, kaipuan siguro na, kuwanan si assurance ang full cooperation kang telcos, saka kang Kasurako, and si sa tuwyan ma-understanding na, they cannot do it in just one sweep, but gradually. Siguro mapuon sa centro, sa commercial area sta, because of the cost and the technical capability. Kaya dapat magtrabangan Manggirari na ma-implementa ini with the private sector. Kasi kung, kung bakong feasible ini, as far as the private sector is concerned, masasakitan po ining, uh, LGO intervention, ining initiative na ti. Pero just the same, I would like to seek approval of this, the passing of this ordinance para po makapuon kita, mapuunan, and mapiritan ang gabos na magkooperado hindi sa magayon na initiatibong ini. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Perez, formal motion, Honorable Del Rosario.
Before that, Madam Chair, I'd like to thank Counselor Perez. I'd like to invite your attention in sa, sa purpose, sa section, ano, uh, yan. Yan, in section P, second paragraph, ipakibaba yan. Sa second paragraph, Madam Chair, kang section P, ang last phrase, ang last phrase niya, Madam Chair, is, which includes the pacing of its implementation. So we assure everyone, that, they'taman talaga may bibigla niya, Madam Chair, uh, but, uh, it will be paced and subject to consultation, eventual la consultation in the future.
Thank you, Honorable.
So, Madam Chair, I move that we approve this proposed ordinance on underground cabling on second reading.
Any second, kay approve?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Del Rosario, next item?
Sixth Committee Report of the Committee on Peace and Order and Public Safety and Disaster Management.
Counselor Benefe, Chair of the Committee on Peace and Order, I, Peace and Order and Public Safety.
This is a Committee on Peace and Order, Public Safety, and Disaster Management Report. Uh, the committee hearing was conducted on August 4, 2022, at 3:21 PM. Request, request acknowledge the report, Madam Chair.
Your report is acknowledged.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There were two items discussed during the business, and I would like to start with the second item, Madam Chair, since this is shorter to discuss. Uh, item number two, is a letter dated July 19, 2022 from Police Colonel Nelson A. Pacalzo, requesting for a passage of a resolution, requesting telecommunications companies to temporarily shut off mobile signals during the annual traslasyon procession, vehicle regional military parade, band majorit exhibition, and fluvial procession. We had a thorough discussion on this, Madam Chair, and the Naga City Police Office is now in the process of preparing its initial Penha Francia 2022 security plan. One of their concerns is the overall safety and security of the guests and devotees who will be in the city to witness all religious and civic activities during the celebration of the Penha Francia festival from September 9 to 18, 2022. This is usually, uh, security measure being adapted when conducting major events and important, uh, activities that gathers a lot of people. So may proceed to the disposition, Madam Chair?
May proceed.
On motion of Honorable Gilda Gale Abonal Gomez, seconded by Honorable Antonio Beltran, Honorable Maria Corazon Penha Flor, and Punung Barangay Raquel Tutanis, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sanggunean Panlongso to pass a resolution requesting the telecommunications companies to temporarily shut off mobile signals during the annual traslasyon procession, vehicle regional military parade, band majorit exhibition, and fluvial procession. And I so move for this disposition, Madam Chair.
Any second?
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I now proceed back to the first item, Madam Chair, and I would like to apologize in advance that this will be a little lengthy. Excuse me. The first item is the proposed ordinance by yours truly, authored by Honorable Antonio Beltran, entitled, "An Ordinance Implementing the Road Clearing of All Illegal Constructions, Structures, and Obstructions from Public Roads, Road Sides, Street Sides, and Other Public Passageways, and Incorporating Relevant Provisions." and Incorporating Relevant Provisions of Ordinance Number 93-049 of the City of Naga, and Prescribing Penalties for Violations thereof." As you know, Madam Chair, members of the Sanguniam Panlonsod, obstructions have caused accidents which were preventable had our roads, walkways, and public thoroughfares remained clear from obstructions, such as a pedestrian getting hit by a motorcycle in trying to avoid a debris on the road, vehicle getting bumped by another while evading a road obstruction. And just recently, Madam Chair, there was also an accident, a bicycle, uh, uh, person using a bicycle was trying to avoid an obstruction on the road and was also bumped and got injured. We also have, uh, roads and pedestrians, pedestrians walking on the road due to illegally occupied sidewalks, and many other occurrence of accidents resulting to injuries and damage to property suffered due to road obstructions. And not to mention, the illegal encroachments have also narrowed some of our local roads which, if left unchecked, would adversely affect the flow of increasing traffic volume and cause great inconvenience to motorists and delay or hamper essential public services such as help, fire, and police responses. Likewise, the City Government of Naga is primarily concerned to promote public welfare and safety of the people. And along this line, also, the DILG has issued earlier a series of memorandum circulars advising the local government units and the PNP and the BFP to resume the implementation of the road clearing in the new normal and to harmonize existing guidelines on the same. There was an extensive discussion and during this committee hearing, the proponent also presented the whole draft of the ordinance. And with it, uh, there were comments and recommendations which were considered by the proponents. May I therefore proceed to the disposition, Madam Chair, before I present a draft of the, uh, ordinance?
You may now proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. After an extensive discussion on the proposed ordinance, the proponent, Honorable Yours Truly, and co-authored by Honorable Antonio Beltran, has corrected on motion of Honorable Del Rosario, seconded by Honorable Gilda Gale Abonal Gómez and Honorable Maria Corazon Peny Flor, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sanguniam Panlonsod to pass the "Ordinance Implementing the Road Clearing of All Illegal Construction, Structures, and Obstruction from Public Roads, Road Sides, Street Sides, and Other Public Passageways, incorporating therein relevant provisions of City Ordinance Number 93-049 of the City of Naga, and Prescribing Penalties for Violations thereof." And I should move for the approval of this disposition, Madam Chair.
Any second, may approve.
May I now present the ordinance, Madam Chair, the salient features of this ordinance?
Honorable Del Castillo, you're raising your hand.
I support this proposed ordinance, Madam Chair. However, I have some apprehension, particularly in the elimination of this. Why? Uh, there are so many vehicles within, uh, day in and including night. They are parked along roadside, and they are causing danger to pedestrians. Likewise, uh, our sidewalks are being occupied by illegal vehicles, and, uh, such as, they're not leaving. So, my concern, Madam Chair, is, how could we ensure that after adoption and enactment of this ordinance, it will be implemented? Uh, it will not be, uh, will not be the same, with the same fate of some ordinances wherein they just lie there, in danger. Nagiging muralista. They're not implementar. I will cite some ordinances. The Anti-Jumping Wire Ordinance that was passed in 2005. It was not implemented. The Anti-Race Ordinance, passed in 2009. They're not enforced. So, madad and dagdagan tas'ng nagtuturoo ng mga ordinancea. Yet, I, I, as I mentioned, maray ang katuyahan, Madam Chair. How could we be assured, napakapasar talit, may implementar? Mas masakit ini implementar kesa't katung ordinancea na pagsabi. So, iyan lang ang concern, Madam Chair. I'm not objecting to this ordinance. In fact, I'm supporting this ordinance, but my worry is on the matter of implementation. Paano tangharaliyon 'yan mga auto ng ente sa tinanpo? Kasi mga auto, may mga auto na mayong dingarahi. Si mga paratinda sa sidewalk na pagbinakot po, ilireklamo kasi nadada ko. Tama ang gini-gin. Itong mga iba pang obstruction sa tinanpo. In fact, pati gobyerno kabali, a violated and obstruction sa tinanpo. How could we implement properly this proposed ordinance? That's my, that's my concern, Madam Chair. But again, I will, uh, restate that I am in favor of adopting this.
Thank you.
Iyan lang si sapuyan mga.
Thank you, Honorable Del Castillo.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Honorable Del Castillo. So, sa implementation, ang ano kanin. So, you make.
Honorable, uh, Madam Chair, may I reply to the, uh, comment of Honorable Del Castillo? Thank you, Madam Chair. This is exactly the reason why we are framing this ordinance, because there should be a legislative framework which should serve as a basis for the conduct of clearing operations. And whenever it is needed by our enforcers, there is an ordinance or a law that they can lean on so that they will not be subject to, uh, legal actions or complaints by those concerned or those affected. Otherwise, if we will not do anything, magpapadagus niyo, as I have mentioned earlier, may mga, uh, roads kita, including the sidewalks, na minsan hinuokpar na. May mga encroachments naginigribo, and it has drastically narrowed our roads or passageways. And it also poses danger already to pedestrians and even vehicles and motorists. Yeah, uh, this is the reason, uh, why we are framing this. And another is that we have been issued already a series of memorandum circulars by the Department of Interior and Local Government, as guided by the pronouncements also of President Duterte before, that we should continue with the road clearing. Because if we will just let it be, kung ano nangyayari, mayong kitang ginigibo di sa ciudad ni Naga, mayong basihan para mag-implementing clearing ang sapuyan mga law enforcers. Ma'apadagus ini, ang Naga mga tao, okay lang. So, nagsasadit, nagsasadita sapuyan tinampu, kakaiwaning sprouting kang kadakul-dakul na vendors dyan sa sapuyan mga sidewalks. And eventually, gulpiyunan niyo, mas masakit talugod i-enforce. Regarding the, itong mga illegal parking, actually, may previous ng mga batas. In fact, there is a national law on this, 'yung mga sa, kwanan oh, road and traffic safety. That's why included in this proposed ordinance, ito pagcite atong mga provisions dumaan sa national law. And likewise, there was already an ordinance that was, uh, approved some time ago during the previous term of mayors. And, uh, i-kinalta si ibang mga provisions dumaan, in include the dignity for emphasis and for its relevance in this, uh, the title of this ordinance, which is specifically para sa mga road clearing, which includes the sidewalks, passageways, and, uh, other, uh, public, uh, pathways for the safety and convenience kang mga tagan Naga. So, if we will not have, uh, some basis, kawawa man sapuyan mga law enforcers. Anyway, it is up to the discretion also of our enforcers, of our heads of the barangay, mga punong barangay, and of course, the city mayor, who can actually declare, kung ang sarumbagay is an obstruction and it poses danger, pwede niyang declare as obstruction. Madam Chair.
Honorable Del Castillo.
Well, be happy for that response. Um, actually, I've not seen the, uh, full text of the ordinance. As I've said, I support this ordinance, but, uh, as far as obstruction is concerned, I think it should be, uh, defined. It should be defined in the proposed ordinance. If there is no definition yet of what obstruction is, including other, other, uh, things that is the subject of road clearing operation. Uh, if there is no definition yet, I, I suggest that it should be, there should be a definition so that in the, uh, in the implementation of this ordinance, there will be no gray area uh, which will, uh, which might put our enforcer.
Igo pagandang definition of them.
Some program. So, dapat, dapat gomelino na definition gan'ya, Madam Chair, kung mayroon. But, buwanan din, suba't suba.
Thank you, Honorable, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, Honorable Del Castillo.
Honorable Peny Flor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And respeto ko po itong ka'ins, eh, instead of Castillo, Honorable Del Castillo. Uh, ibang mapukat po kisang ngayan. Ngayan po, tanis po rin sapuyan ngayan na trabaho ng tapu ni dahil, ay pampu talaga ini ngayan ka sapuyan, uh, siudad. Arus samoyas sa barangay, dahil po kami maka-hateo, tuyon na may kaming untungan o, uh, maipmamanak sa mga town na ini po sarung ordinance sanat talaga ang tutupadun tapu ni, sagos nun nindu sadai, halin nindu ang mga nakataulang sa satryam, satryapong mga serbo. Kaya po, rasesuput ako sa, na kadunungan po ni, Honorable Omar, dahil po, ini po ngayan, apupunantah, kung dey ngayan nu'arin tah, salamat.
Thank you, Honorable Peny Flor. Honorable Benafé, make the final motion.
Thank you.
Before that, Honorable Rosales, and then Honorable Del Rosario.
Just one suggestion, Madam Chair. For the effective implementation and enforcement of this ordinance, dapat siguro mag-add kita ni provision for funding. I've noticed in the proposed ordinance, mayo pong nakalag provision for funding. Although, I'm not saying there should be a specific amount, pero, just a provision, perhaps in the last part, uh, just add another section for funding. All, or the amount necessary for the effective implementation and enforcement of the provisions of this ordinance shall be, uh, my suggestion could be incorporated in the annual budget of the Public Safety Office. Para mayong excuse, baka sabihin na, they na-implement dahil kulang ang mga equipment, uh, mayong sasakyan. Aruk ka tong one time, sabi ka tong sarung building official, 'yung mga kami nakakatuyon 'yung mga illegally constructed buildings, kasi sasaro sasakyan, nagsasurublian lang kami sa baba. So, sa ilin ko, we could add a, a section for funding para po sa, uh, to carry out the intent of this ordinance, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Rosales.
And that would, uh, in effect, uh, change or add a phrase in the title and appropriating funds therefore.
Thank you, Honorable Rosales. Honorable Del Rosario.
I, I suggest, Madam Chair, that the Honorable Benafé discuss the salient features of the, of the ordinance para mahiling ta' si ibang aspect na. Mapasadahan mo lang, sir, si ibang important, uh, aspect.
Si mga importanteng ano lang po, it's now two minutes before our break.
Thank you, Honorable Del Rosario, Honorable Rosales. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, with your permission, I would like to go over the salient features of this ordinance.
Please proceed.
And we start from the, uh, title of the ordinance. Uh, please, uh, scroll down. Before, uh, sorry. The scope. The provisions of this ordinance shall cover the clearing of all public roads, including streets, bridges, pedestrian lanes, highways, roadside, street sides, other public passageways within the territorial jurisdiction of the City of Naga. The purpose is to regulate the use and maintenance of roads, sidewalks, streets, and setbacks. So, please take note, uh, it includes setbacks, in order to reclaim public roads and rid them of illegal or private obstructions or encroachments, and to facilitate the safe and convenient use thereof. So, here, uh, on the next section, section four, we define the terms that are used. And, uh, 4.1, section 4.1 defines public roads, refers to all streets, roads, bridges, highways, and other thoroughfares constructed and maintained by the national government or by the local government unit. Provided that any road or sidewalk not falling under this definition, but which upon the determination of the City of Naga is deemed vital to pedestrian safety and access, shall be deemed a public road for the purpose of this ordinance. So, there is a definition also of the national roads, provincial roads, and the city or municipal roads, including barangay roads, which were actually called from the memorandum circulars issued by DILG. which were actually called from the memorandum circulars issued by D I L G itself. We also define the road clearing and road obstructions. So here, we enumerated the types of road obstructions. Of course, road obstruction refers to structures, materials, or activities within the right of way that impede the free and clear passage of motor vehicles or pedestrians and which pose or cause danger or injury upon motorists, pedestrians, and occupants of nearby structures. This include, but are not limited to the following, ito na yon mga vehicles parked in prohibited areas. These are actually coined from the Republic Act or the national law forty-one thirty-six, other was known as the Land Transportation and Traffic Code. And for vehicular parking pursuant also to section fifty-two of the same code. Nakainumerat man duman si mga prohibited practice of illegal ito mga parking. Vehicular terminals, gulpinakita kayanig di. Minsan, very, kaya na arbitra rin na yung paglaagning mga vehicular terminals. In fact, duman sa tubang kang arong kantugan ko, iguanan duman, nagti-terminaling bus dati, kung day na ireklamo. Maririsa muna nagti-terminal, sa iguanas yun mga ticket-ticket na bigko kolekta duman sa tuban na'to. And this is very close to the rotonda. Kaya nagkokros talaga ni yung traffic obstructions duman. So if we will not include this, siguro maparadakul pa niyo. Even at jack drivers or their association, minsan na arbitrarily na, kwan lang tinda, na laagning sendang parking areas or terminal kang sendang pajak. We also have vending sites of any kind of item, mga housing encroachments, store encroachments, obstructing barangay outpost. So it includes government. But also nasarok sa mga violators man. Conduct of sports facilities, kung ma-lag ng basketballan sa tao kan tinampo. This one is also very common in drying of rice and other crops. Ang barangay officials, kamin san, day makasitar ka nit, mayo man sendang basihan. But actually, this has been included already in the previous laws that were passed. Anyway, nasa discretion po ini kang kaya ano, kung talagang ipuananinda i-implemento laws. Sa, but per se, it is already prohibited. We also have construction materials and debris, mga kwan. So listadyan si mga defined as road obstructions. For section five, we have the liability of the building and structure owners and occupants. Pagka may obstruction na ginibuninda. So, the building owner cannot just dismiss the accusation na iyan ay um, nag-aarkila o occupied langan sa iyan building unless it is proven na separate sila. So they will have a solidary liability. For section six, we have mentioned also the prohibited acts and practices which points back to the definition of obstructions. So any act that results in any road obstruction as defined under section four of this ordinance. Iyon ang mga prohibited acts. And another is the willing or wittingly refusing to abate or remove existing road obstructions as defined under again section four. We also have in section seven, yung exceptions. The local chief executive may upon application grant special permit for temporary and limited use of provincial, city, or municipal roads, streets, and sidewalks for a definite period of time during any of the following. Fiesta's, public rallies, significant government activities, wakes, and other social gatherings within the locality. Activities for civic or charitable causes, mga flea markets or changi provided that special permits have been obtained and recognized by the local chief executive and provided further that the occupied space does not impede the flow of traffic. Penalties shall not apply during times of emergencies such as urban fires, man-made disasters, or natural calamities. In section eight, we also enumerated the implementing strategy and enforcement. So road clearing operations shall be regularly conducted by Naga City Government through its road clearing task group to bar illegal constructions and other obstructions which may hinder or affect road networks in all local roads under their jurisdiction. Road clearing operations in national roads shall be undertaken also in coordination with the national government agency concerned with the management of said roads such as the D P W H and the Department of Transportation or D O T R. So my provisions regarding the road clearing task group uh, that is allowed to use equipment. Kasi, mayroon pa kong nailing dati na tong ordinance, limbawa authorizing the use of yun ang mga wheel clamps. This time, uh, we place it in a provision that allows wheel clamping of illegally parked vehicles and also the use of towing services. So the city engineers shall conduct a periodic inspection. Likewise, and public safety office and the P N P shall also conduct periodic inspections. The Naga City L G U Road Clearing Task Group shall, nakainumerate po dili si mga task, ang Naga City Road Clearing Task Group. Likewise, supervise component barangays to ensure their compliance with the directives outlined herein. So there is also a provision for what is the responsibility of the barangays. So all barangays shall conduct regular road clearing operations in all barangay roads and implement aliases for the efficient use of the same, such as the enforcement of non-parking, one-side parking, or other similar strategies in accordance with this ordinance. They are also tasked to maintain city roads cleared and turned over by the city government. This actually one of those suggested by the punong barangays who attended the committee hearing. The barangay officials are also enjoined to coordinate with the P S O and the P N P and the implementation of the road clearing operation in the barangay. So, iba pang mga strategies are enumerated. And in section nine, we have the provision on implementing rules and regulations which states to further carry out effectively.
Honorable Benefei.
Yes.
The rest of the group is now asking for a break. It's already ten forty. So, kung we take a break, ibalikan ka na lang po yan.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Ano pa ba yan? Haloy ka po, day naman.
Aranina po ma'am.
Okay, Honorable Rosales.
I will just be.
Perhaps over the break, Madam Chair, the members who have not yet read the full text and browse, make use of the time.
I will have.
So that you could save the Honorable Benefei from discussing comprehensively the, the full ordinance.
Thank you, Honorable Rosales. So we take a break and the Honorable Benefei can just show ano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Honorable Rosales.
Take your break.